I apologize. I will get this going right away and try and move it along to make up for the last time there. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the October 22th Greenwich Board of Selectmen virtual meeting. As always, we will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
Thank you. Okay, with the second item would be the approval of the minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting of October 8th. Is there a motion to approve?
Lauren Raven, I motion to approve the meeting minutes from our Board of Selectmen meeting on October 8th, 2020.
Jill Oberlander, I second that motion.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thank you. Go on to the updates. I'll start it off. Yesterday, we had the ribbon cutting for the Aquarian Water land purchase. We had to do it at the Land Trust offices on Roundhill Road, so there really was no ribbon, but it was fun. It was one of the feel-good stories of the year, and a year that certainly needs a lot more of them. So we have acquired another 73 acres that would officially, that will be added to the more than 800 acres of open space that we now have. And we'd like to get it up there a little bit more. And but for this property here, looking forward to working with Greenwich residents, probably Eagle Scout projects to get some trails up. And so we can hopefully enjoy this new land acquisition this winter. So it was a good day there. And thanks to Pat Sesto and to Will of the Land Trust and everybody involved. John Wetmore, who's our land use attorney there. And just a great team effort. And again, a good deal for the town and for future generations. Halloween, I just, we are going forward with it, but we are giving, you know, providing guidance. And I spoke briefly with Mayor Martin this morning on if we're gonna circle back again after 4 o'clock, and some other things. But they're gonna probably cancel theirs. We are planning to have ours, just with proper guidelines and, you know, constant reminders of the protocols that are in place. If, you know, God forbid, there is to be, you know, a real big spike, we certainly would revisit that. We're monitoring it each day. But right now, it's still on. Last weekend, I did meet with some neighbors over at the Mill Palm Park in Cosco. Lots of enthusiasm there. There is a little bit of uncertainty about the property where that the building that used to house the Starbucks coffee business doesn't look like they're going back in there. So we're gonna wait and see with that. But the owner of the property is a Greenwich resident. They're very civic-minded, and they want to work with the town and the neighbors to really beautify and enhance Mill Palm Park. So that's, that's good there. We wish them luck in getting a new tenant. The Lights Initiative for the holiday season, we're almost there. We've almost reached our goal of raising the money. And we're looking at ways to make it more permanent, where we have a consistent funding mechanism in place going forward. But, you know, just a great effort there by Sebastian Gossman and Alyssa Kalishian and everybody else who has donated. We certainly will get that, our thanks out to them publicly for that. But we'd like to, we're thinking about doing an opening night where, you know, maybe we can make it a tradition, where we close down a little bit, a little part of the avenue and have some festivities there. This year, obviously, we have to be very careful, but we're planning something nice for that. The redesign of Roger Sherman Ballon Park, we had a meeting again the other day with department heads. That's ongoing. Really making a lot of progress there. So stay tuned on that one. Town Hall reopening is going well so far. We haven't had no incidents, thank God. But, you know, we're prepared to adjust our guidelines there as we go along if we see the need to. As I said, I spoke to Mayor Martin, excuse me, this morning. But we're going to have another conversation later. As you know, there's been, for many, many years, there's been some frustration on the part of lots of residents of Greenwich about the gift-giving and receiving process. So when I met with them the other day, last week, decided to, you know, suggest a task force with them and to have a representative of the BET, the BOE, even though they have their own processes, and, and the RTM, to see if there's a list of recommendations we can present in the next four to six weeks to see if we can improve. We've already heard some really good ideas. I guess Stanford was involved with a P3 on the waterfront there recently. And I'm gonna ask the mayor his thoughts and what they did there. But we also have some success stories here, too. So we really want to make sure that everybody who's involved in the process has a say in it, a seat at the table. And to see, to make sure that when someone wants to donate money for a project in town, that they know the process and that the process is firmly and fairly in place. We don't want, as Rick Ral said, the Wild West where people are just, you know, donating money and things are going up and approved without much thought. We want to make sure it's thoroughly scrutinized, but we also don't want to slow it down to the point where people just pick up and walk away. Unfortunately, that's happened a lot in the last several years. So we'll see if we could speed up that process a little bit. With that, I believe that is all I have for now. So I will turn it over to Selectwoman Raven for her updates. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning, Fred. Thank you. So I'm continuing to meet with, so my update since two weeks ago, continuing to meet with the POCD Task Force on Affordable Housing. We have received input from some members of the BET, as well as RTM Land Use and the Town Properties Committee. And this Friday, we're gonna be getting some input from Greenwich Communities, also known as the Housing Authority. And Fred, thanks for talking about the Let There Be Lights Initiative. I do want to make a plug for that. People do want to donate. The website to go on and make a donation is GWCH Avenue, all spelled out, dot com. And we've also met with the Let There Be Lights Committee, as well as the Greenwich, as part of the Reimagine Greenwich Committee, to talk about how we align efforts. And as Fred, you mentioned, you know, what is the process? There is a sponsorship level for Let There Be Lights that talks about a banner, and it's not the banners that are on the light posts. It's the banner that goes across Greenwich Avenue at Lewis Street. And as my fellow board members know, that we need to come up with a comprehensive advertising policy for initiatives such as this. And, you know, look forward to our town attorney giving us any input that other communities have in place. There is a policy for the banner that goes across Greenwich Avenue, and we just need to make sure that all initiatives are aligned and coordinated. And we continue to do interviews for boards and commissions. We have some coming up today. So my plug to try to end this meeting by 12:30.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Lauren. And then we'll go to Selectperson Oberlander for Jill's updates. Morning, Jill.
Great. Thank you, Fred. And good morning, everyone. Thanks, Lauren. Continuing the work with the Sustainability Committee, and it overlaps with a lot of the discussion this morning. The first thing I want to, I want to talk about is a volunteer project that's being organized by the POCD Greenscape Committee. It is to enhance the area called, I guess, Chestnut Island in Cosco, between Indian Field Road and Farnland Road, across from the Pizza Post. There's been, the project is to plant crocus bulbs, which will mirror the beautiful display of the second, in front of the Second Congregational Church. The project is looking for volunteers to help with the planting. We have the bulbs. And it is being organized by Baron Snyder. And she's collecting the names of the volunteers. And they'll be meeting on Wednesday, November 4th, with a rain date of Wednesday, November 11th. The idea is to meet at 10:00 AM and to try to complete it as quickly as possible. If you, or anyone you know, has an interest in volunteering, please reach out to one of the three of us, or send us an email, or reach out to the Office of the First Selectmen. We'll get you the information and connect you with Baron. And I think it'll be a really successful project, the first step of their enhancement committee. The second project I want to identify is to follow along on the donations. We're looking to identify grant funds, grant matching funds, to do a update of the Bicycle Industrial Master Plan. So that's something that the Conservation Commission has been working on as part of our Sustainable Connecticut recertification process. So that's something that we hope to be able to report positively on in the next couple of weeks, and also looking for community participation as well. Sustainability, the Sustainability Committee will be identifying sort of the next step priorities. We welcome anyone to join us, and again, reach out to us as well. And then general constituent questions and responses. So thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Jill. Good work there by both Lauren and Jill. Lots of exciting things going on. And hopefully, we'll start to see even more come this way.
One quick question, actually, really for Lauren, I guess, maybe to let the public know how much, how much money you still need to raise for the Lights project, and how much you've raised so far. I think it would be encouraging to know how much has been raised, and maybe motivating to know how much is still left to be raised.
I believe about 80%, of the needed monies for Greenwich Avenue has been raised. But the thought is, if we can raise more money, we'll also, or the team will also put lights on East Putnam Avenue. So from Greenwich Avenue to the YMCA, as well as lights in the Cosco district. So there, there isn't a cap per se. The more money that can be raised, the lights will be expanded into other areas. So it's about 80% of what is needed for Greenwich Avenue.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we're, I guess, we've gotten communications from some residents that were interested in donating. And if we do, as, you know, there is no cap, as Lauren said, so if we do go above and beyond, even what Lauren just mentioned, the expansion of lights, there's some other ideas that we're talking with people about to see if they would like to donate to more permanent things down there. So hopefully, that will keep that going. And again, thanks to all that were involved, that are involved in the reason.
One other quick question. Sorry, I'm just thinking about it. How long are the lights scheduled to remain up? Or, because I think it would be a wonderful amenity for the downtown area if we could keep them up, you know, throughout the darker days of winter.
I'm with you.
I personally don't know the answer, but can find out. And, you know, we could announce it at our next meeting. And I just want to mention that the fiduciary for the Let There Be Lights project is actually the Greenwich Community Projects Fund. And that fund was created to put and build the 9/11 memorial at Cosco Park.
Thank you. I do agree with Jill. If we can, the more, the longer, the better. The long, dark days of winter, it certainly would be something that would be brighten our days and nights up a little bit. So hopefully, we can get a more of a concrete idea of how long we can keep them up.
Yeah.
Going forward. So thank you. Right, thank you. Going on to old business, we have the proposed car dealers loading zone on Edgewood. And we have with us Police Traffic Technician Roger Drenth and P&amp;Z Director Katie DeLuca joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. May I start quickly and just say that I absolutely loved hearing the beginning of this meeting and all this talk about the plan. And I know Jim's on this call in DPW. And I don't know if anyone from Parks and Rec, but it's just so fun to hear about all the initiatives that are coming out of the plan, and to hear you all talk about them and report about them. And, and it's just such a collaborative effort between many town departments and also the public. And it's, I'm just, I got a very happy feeling right now. And I just wanted to say thank you so much for reporting on everything and for all the hard work. And it's just, it's terrific. I just would quickly also, if I could, the parking for the event on November 4th. People can park at the high school and, of course, walk over. But I happen to know the person who owns the Pizza Post building. And she, I did reach out to her and asked if we could park there for this event. And she was most generous and said she would be thrilled to be able to just offer that little bit of help to this effort. So if people are coming, they can also use that parking lot, too, to park there.
Great.
And speaking of parking, segueing on to why we're here. Officer Drenth and I have met or spoken about what we're doing. And really, I think at this point, we just want to give you a quick update and request that we kind of table this for a little bit longer, if that's okay. Because what's happened since last we met was, we've tried to work with the dealerships, as we reported last time, and asked them to not use that facility, the loading dock, or loading zone, and to please try to use their approved loading space. And the response was very positive. And they said they, everybody understood the problems, and they would absolutely try to do that. Then we did start getting photographs and whatnot from the neighborhood, saying it's really not going well. Here's this trailer, that trailer, whatever. So we reached out, and Mercedes actually responded by hiring a security guard that is now stationed at the loading zone and chases away not only people coming to pick up Mercedes. And it's not, it's not, you know, a Mercedes operation in fairness to them. It's people that are these so-called Uber drivers, what we've been calling them, but people that are coming to pick up vehicles and whatnot. So the security guard is there, chasing away the trailers from all the dealerships. So I think we need a little bit more time with that to just let the word get out that they shouldn't be going there. And so that, that's one thing why I want to kind of, they've committed to keeping the security guard there until November. So I think if we could just kind of see how that plays out. The other thing that we talked about last time was potentially removing the loading zone completely. Because if everybody has a place where they are supposed to be loading and unloading vehicles, technically, there's no longer a need for it. And the only issue with that, of course, is that Porsche is entitled to use that space because it was part of their site plan approval. So I have reached out to their attorney and asked, you know, very simply, perhaps they could, they could unload at the Audi dealership, since they're both owned by New Country. And he said, that's not possible, just because they are two separate entities, which I, which I respect. So we're in, kind of working with them. I know Jim Michael is on this call also, and I've reached out to him and had a very, very brief discussion about what that would mean if we did get rid of the loading zone. But obviously, we need to have a more in-depth discussion. Officer Drenth has raised some important questions and issues that might arise physically from getting rid of that loading zone in terms of curbing and the like. So I think we need a little bit more time to be able to discuss internally, if that's okay with everybody, before any conclusion is reached on, in terms of what's happening with the proposed second loading zone, or maybe that's off the table, and this one will be removed also. So there's still kind of some questions that I think need to be answered before we can fully report, you know, before we can give you all a full story on the situation.
Okay, thanks, Katie. Appreciate that, and your kind words and your enthusiasm, as always. Mr. Drenth, our great traffic technician, who's been working hard on this for a long, long time. Did you want to add anything to it, sir?
No, sir. Katie said it much better than I did. I did speak with James Michael after I spoke with Katie. He's on board with two. I gave him the same problems, concerns that I have, that we can't just make it just for Porsche, because it is on public property. It is a public loading zone. And to get rid of it, which we don't have a problem with, as long as Porsche has a place to go to, has its own concerns, which you touched on, and we would, that's why we'd have to go through with Mr. Michael on that. And it wouldn't be fair to you guys to keep going on this. Right now, to table this, I don't want to kill the proposal completely. We may have to go back to the original. But right for now, I would say we table it. We're on the right track. But we just don't have enough information to bring it to fruition right now.
Okay, thank you. And send our thanks to Oscar Smythe, too, for his work on this.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Fred, I just have a quick question for Katie before we move on.
Sure.
Katie, one of the questions that came up during this conversation about this is the entire aesthetics of that car corridor, or automobile alley, or how the look of that strip of the post road has changed over the last decade or so. I'm wondering, now that you have this more positive working group going with all of the car dealers, whether you could pull together a, just some conversation about whether they can all work together with the town to improve the aesthetics of that whole strip. I think to put together some kind of plan or proposal that would make a real difference. Right now, it's very disparate, and maybe we could pull it together, and the whole area would look better. And actually, I think would advance their, their missions as well, make it more amenable for their clients to come to that area.
Yeah, thank you. And it's funny you said that, because that's a direct objective in the plan, as a matter of fact, that we have what we called the Car Dealership Summit. But I think you're right, since we're all kind of talking at the moment, now would be a good time to, to let them all know that there's other things we wanted to chat with them about, too, while we're at it. So, yeah, I think, I think one of the, you know, the, a lot of them have come through, as we've talked about, through the planning and zoning process, to make improvements. And the commission has really worked hard to, number one, get the cars, the employee parking off of the side streets and onto the property, to get the loading and unloading on their own property. And as best as we possibly can, get the parking out of the front yard. It is not permitted in the front yard unless it's screened, or by virtue of topography, it's out of the way. So that's a regulation that has been in place for a long time. A lot of them do have non-conforming rights. And of course, they are trying to sell a car. So there's a balance, a balance thing there. But that's, that there's, although there have been a lot of improvements with respect to the brick and mortar, certainly to the landscaping, but as we all know, that there's always more that could be done. An interesting thing had come up recently, where someone had suggested that they would offer their property and do a very high-tech parking garage. It was, you know, many, like, you wouldn't physically walk into it. You would just drive your car, and then the machine takes it off and parks it and what have you. And they had offered their property for this. And if there is a way that we could force, or offer, is a better way of putting it, offer inventory storage off-site, so that we could free up some of the land on the car dealer property itself, so that they could properly display vehicles, and more importantly, get rid of some of their impervious surface and add more landscaping and beautify the area. I mean, that would just be a total win. So that's something that's, we talked about at one point. But yeah, your point is well-taken. I think there's certainly that a lot more could be done there. And it's an important industry for the town, and certainly we want to support them, too.
Right. Thank you. Thanks for, if you could keep us updated on that aspect of it, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, we'll do.
Thank you.
Fred?
Yes?
It's Ben. I just want to make sure, as part of this overall dialogue, that we're sensitive to the site plan process that was, that was went through by the several parcels, and is why they are where they are, and why their businesses are able to operate, that this body does not become a conduit to circumvent or somehow change the site plan approval that the zoning commission had approved. You know, now that there's a problem, the correct way of addressing it would be to go back to the zoning commission and address it through the site plan process, not through the Board of Selectmen to address off-site parking issues. To do that, would, this body would be undermining the site plan process. So I just want to be sensitive to that, that people don't suddenly look at the Board of Selectmen as a way to somehow undermine their site plan approval.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you for saying that. You're absolutely right. And to that end, if, that's, that's why this is going to take a little bit of time, because if Porsche does figure out some change outside of using that loading zone, I mean, to me, ideally, it would be that they could just continue to use that loading zone, because they use it so infrequently. But they, in talking to them, they said, yeah, sure, that's fine, but we're not going to police it. So, you know, they were kind of back at square one, I think, because the idea behind, you know, it's very difficult to police this thing, as we know. And so right now, Mercedes happens to be doing it with the private security, but they can't keep that going. That's not fair to them. So, so if Porsche does end up having to go to a different spot, as Ben correctly points out, that would mean that they would have to get their site plan approval amended.
Hey, thank you. And thanks for bringing that up, Ben. That's Katie and Margarita told us that, little nicer way, but you were direct, and that's, we need to hear. That's, that's good. Hopefully, a lot of people heard that, right? So thank, thank you both, all three of you, for bringing that up, and an update. So now we'll go to Item B, an old business. Can we have Assistant Town Attorney Amida Abed here for an update on the 5G cell towers?
Margarita has a hand this.
Sorry, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, just to add to what Katie was saying, and Jill's question, real fast. So because of all this with the dealers, we moved up the next implementation, oh, Jim Michael, I haven't shared this yet, but the next implementation we'd like to do with the Greenscape plan is the Edgewood Triangle, for the very reason that Jill's raising. We want to make the point that we value the section of town. We want to begin to show that we're taking care of it, et cetera. So as Katie and I have been working on the dealers, we said, we're going to start focusing more on that area as well. So Jim, that's another encroachment permit. I just hadn't broken the nose to you yet. Okay, bye.
Thanks, Margarita.
We love working with everyone. We're not sure if everyone likes working with us yet.
Okay, thank you. Now, on to Item B, update on the 5G cell towers with Amida Abed. Good morning, Amida.
Good morning, Mr. First Selectmen, members of the board. You had asked the Law Department to look into the approval process for the small cell antennas that we seem to be seeing quite a bit around town, in our neighborhoods, along our streets. So in order to do that, our office did some research on, on what's going on with PURA, with the Connecticut Siting Council, and also at the FCC level, and some recent developments in terms of case law that's come down. So I believe part of your package today is a memorandum that I had put together, addressed to the board. And so I'll try to be as brief as I can. In my memorandum, I provide you quite a bit of detail. But essentially, when we talk about whether it's 5G or 4G, and all the small cell antennas that we've been seeing, it can get to be a pretty complex regulatory process at various levels, starting at the very top, at the FCC and the Telecommunications Act of 1996, where the congressional intent was to expand wireless service throughout the country. So that's sort of the umbrella organization. And going down from there, at the state level, we have the Connecticut Siting Council, we have PURA, which is the Public Utilities Regulatory Council. And then, of course, we get down to the level of municipalities, and the question there being, what can we as a town do? What are municipalities, in general, allowed to do in terms of the regulation of small cell antennas? Starting at the top, with the Telecommunications Act of 1996, there've been some developments recently, over the last few years. But really, one of the key points there to keep in mind is that states and municipalities may not regulate the placement and construction of the small cell type antennas on the basis of radio frequency emissions. of the small cell type antennas on the basis of radio frequency emissions and environmental effects that may arise out of radio frequency emissions, because the FCC is the authority that sets those standards. So whether it's at the state level or the municipal level, we don't have the ability to either stop small cell antennas going up, or regulate them in such a way where we set our own standards for radio frequency or RF emissions. There are also very specific time deadlines within which these types of applications have to be approved. And especially, we see that with both PURA and the Connecticut Siting Council. I've attached a chart to my memorandum, which really gives you a sort of a one-page, a snapshot of, you know, what can the Connecticut Siting Council regulate versus what can the Public Utilities Regulatory Council or PURA regulate? And, and to really simplify their jurisdiction, the Siting Council really oversees installations on telecommunications towers, on monopoles, which you may be familiar with. We've seen some of those as we drive along the Merritt, or some here in town, and, and those types of structures. And PURA, on the other hand, has jurisdiction over electric distribution lines. And again, there's a very definitive process in place, both with the Siting Council and with PURA, where telecommunications companies submitting these types of applications have to provide a detailed analysis of RF emissions in their applications, structural analysis. So, so it gets to be pretty detailed at that level. And we, as a municipality, are notified when there's an application filed with the Siting Council. I believe those go to the Board of Selectmen's office, and planning and zoning gets copied on those. And the PURA process is a little bit different, where in, in that process, the company has to notify us, as well as adjoining owners, where they're locating a site of the application, at least 30 days before they actually file with PURA, and give us, as a town, the opportunity to get more information from them if we find we need to have a discussion on, on anything that we feel is missing, or where we have questions. So there's a very definitive process in place, and the PURA process actually was put into place back in 2016, 17, as a result of a declaratory ruling that Greenwich had sought from PURA in terms of these types of installations. So I think we have, you know, Greenwich's involvement going back several years to try to streamline the process, to make sure we, as a municipality, have a seat at the table, and the same with adjoining property owners. And that is the process PURA follows, so we do get notified about the applications that are being filed. And the question then becomes, what can we, here in Greenwich, do? What type of regulations can we put in place? There are currently approval processes in place through the Land Use Department. There's the administrative review versus a site plan type of application for certain types of installations. But based on, on our research, we've seen that there are some municipalities who have put together some very detailed zoning regulations, actually, trying to regulate aesthetics, location preferences, things like that, but only really as to things that are outside the jurisdiction of PURA and the Connecticut Siting Council. And, and the regulations, the zoning regulations, we've seen very specifically say that, that their regulations are in compliance with the FCC standards, the RF emission standards, and that they're not requiring anything more than what the FCC allows. So that's a very important point to keep in, keep in mind, that we do come under that bigger umbrella of the standards that have been developed at the federal level. So we have seen some zoning regulations by, in particular, I've taken a look at New Canaan, Easton, Wilton, which are very detailed. But again, they, they put out preferences, which the Siting Council may take into consideration, but, but it does not take over from the jurisdiction that's inherent in the Siting Council and PURA. And I think the Board had heard recently, or earlier this year, that Easton had put together what was being called a moratorium on 5G installations. So this was actually earlier this year, when the Board of Selectmen adopted a resolution essentially saying that they would like a stop on the build-out of 5G wireless infrastructure, at least until December 31st of this year. I reached out to the First Selectmen's office in Easton, and apparently, nothing really has happened since that resolution, so that there's been no action taken by the town of Easton. There've also been some recent developments at the federal level with a Court of Appeals decision that came out, and then I've given you some detail about that in my memorandum. But at the end of the day, I think we have to keep in mind where the different jurisdictions lie, and if we, as a community, and as a matter of policy, want to look into whether, you know, it's through zoning or a town ordinance, putting some more detail into how we would like to see these installations in town. That becomes a question of policy, and whether that's something this Board would like to think about and, and discuss. But if we do, do that, we do have to keep in mind where the lines are drawn in, in terms of a jurisdiction.
Thank you, Amida. Yeah, we've heard from several residents who are under the impression that we could stop it, and this clearly says if they're following FCC guidelines, that we can't, cannot stop these installations. And that, that's a, you know, if there's anything we can do, you know, that fits within the, the guidelines there, that don't violate or impose on their jurisdictions, I'm very much open to that. But at the end of the day, you're saying, again, if they're following the FCC guidelines, there's nothing that a municipality can do to, to prevent the installation of 5G towers, correct?
Within the, within those guidelines, we can choose to regulate, as some of the other communities have done that I mentioned, whether, whether from a zoning standpoint, or from a town ordinance standpoint, we can regulate, you know, is, is it interfering with sightlines in our rights of way? Is it aesthetically not the right approach, having these types of installations in a certain location? We can certainly express our preference, and particularly when it comes to rights of way, sightlines, those types of issues, we can certainly regulate them and, and make our preferences known at the PURA and Siting Council level. And in fact, model ordinances have been put out recently by the Western Connecticut Council of Governments. They put out a model zoning ordinance and a model municipal ordinance, where, you know, court decisions have said, "We can regulate," but again, you can't, cannot regulate based on our own set of RF emission standards. Or you cannot regulate in a manner where you're essentially putting a stop to these types of installations for a period of time, or saying you simply cannot do this at this time. So, so there are ways to regulate, but again, if we do that, there are certain guidelines we would have to follow, and there are some examples out there, like I said, both with zoning, and then a model ordinance that was recently put out by the Western Connecticut Council of Governments.
Thanks, Amida. Could we get a, a copy of the, the Model WestCog one, and also one of the ordinances that are specific to 5G that you, that you just mentioned?
Yes, so I can share that to you. Now, specific to 5G, the zoning regulations that I talked about are not specific to 5G, but they certainly cover everything, and 5G, I think, is coming. It's not quite here yet, at least not in Greenwich, from what I understand. And speaking with representatives of PURA, I understand applications are starting to be made in Hartford and New Haven, but that's certainly something that's here in the very near future as, as this develops.
Yes, and we're getting lobbied from lots of, even town residents in favor of this, and lots of municipalities are taking advantage of this, and we'll be making, you know, seeing revenue from it, but we also want to make sure that we do all we can on our end to get something up there. Again, if it's just as something as specific as a sightline, I think we do what we can do, and, and certainly, you know, we can't do any more than we're allowed to do. So, yeah, if we could get, just get a copy of those, that would be great, and we can maybe circle back and try and come up with something for Greenwich that's, you know, specific to this, but doing all we can do without violating the, the missions of PURA and the Siting Council.
Absolutely. I'll get those to you, and then we can circle back, as you said.
Thank you so much, Amida. Any more questions, Lauren?
Yeah, so, hi, not so much a question, but thank you, Amida. I know that this has been quite the spider web of information that the team has put together, so I, I want to thank you for doing that and putting it in a way that's clear and allows us to move forward. And, you know, for Jill and Fred, I definitely support what we can do with respect to zoning and regulations about where we can aesthetically put some of these antennas. And certainly, when I did my own education, there are some of the, I know we can't do it from an RF perspective or, or health perspective, but there does seem to be clusters in some areas where we combine the small antennas with the monopoles. So that might be a way of saying, "Okay, just don't put it here, you know, put it, you know, somewhere else" to get around where we're reaching close to those high frequencies.
Okay, thank you. Jill has her hand up. Go ahead, Jill. Want to unmute?
Yeah, thank you, Amida. I echo Lauren. I thought that this memo was extraordinarily helpful. I really appreciate it. I had two questions. The first, and actually Lauren just prompted a third. The first was, you said that there is someone in the town who receives a 30-day advanced notice of applications. Where does that go currently? Who gets that?
So those are applications that are to be filed with PURA. Those come into the Board of Selectmen's office.
So they, so they come to the, the office of the First Selectmen and what happens with them?
So, right up until a few months ago, I'm not sure, but Barbara has been good enough to forward those to our office over the last several months. She's been keeping track of those and sending those here. So we've been, actually, we've put together a pretty comprehensive database of all PURA-approved sites, and we will continue to follow the ones that come in as they get filed. So Barbara has been sending those over to us. Same with the Siting Council, letters that the office gets.
Right, so it would, it would be good to have a process, a clear process, so that we don't miss that response period, and to know who's, who's responsible for which leg, whether it be once it comes in to the office of the First Selectmen, you know, certain timetable to turn it around for the Law Department, certain timetable for the Law Department to advise whether we have a comment or not. I think if we get to the next step, which I'm, I'm fully supportive of, especially in light of the fact that 5G will probably get here, we should be prepared for it. My second question was, if you could advise us, not necessarily now, but whether your recommendation is that it be the municipal regulation be imposed through either planning and zoning, the zoning regulations, or through a town ordinance? That way, we can understand what, what law's recommendation is for the best way to control placement. And I hadn't actually thought about the, the aggregate, the accumulation of the radio frequencies, and whether, whether there's any case law or directive on the ability to decline a specific placement based on the cumulative. But I don't know enough about it to know whether there's a health impact from cumulative radio frequencies at one location or in one geographic area. That would be a useful piece of information to be able to determine placement issues. So I don't know whether you know that offhand, but certainly, when we come back to discuss it, that would be really useful.
Yes, and I'll try to answer at least one or two of your questions now, the best I can. So one of the questions you asked was, would we recommend zoning ordinance versus a, you know, a town ordinance? And I think for that, we'd have to obviously consult with the zoning folks, Katie DeLuca, Margarita Albin, who I know was on, on the meeting a little while ago, and, and sort of do a coordinated effort, look at both the zoning model that's out there, as well as the town ordinance model, and, and coordinate with them and with the First Selectmen's office, and really see from a policy point of view, what would be the best approach? So, so I think that's certainly a discussion we can have as to which approach might be better. If the decision is that we need to do something about this, let's look at how we go about doing that. And then, in terms of the cumulative emissions, when you see clusters, again, one of the parts of an application that gets filed, whether it's with PURA or the Siting Council, is not only do these companies do an analysis of, of the installation that they're doing, but if it's going up with other installations on that same structure, then they also do a cumulative RF analysis. I've seen that in a lot of the applications I've taken a look at, but I can certainly look into that further, Jill, and, and get you more information. And just very briefly to touch on what you asked about, you know, when, when the Selectmen's office gets these letters in, and then we get those here at the Law Department. Right now, there's no process in place, meaning the letters simply inform us that this application is being filed. They give us the opportunity to set up a meeting with the applicant and ask any questions. But, but again, I think when we circle back on this, I think we need to have a discussion. What do we, as a town, want to do when these applications come in? And, you know, in order to object to some of these, there is a pretty high bar there, and we have to have a good basis to object. But again, going back to, if we had regulations, then maybe we could get, get our statement in saying, "Look, we have these regulations. From an aesthetic point of view, this may not be the right installation." So there's certainly more to think about here, and, and more to, I think, talk about and collaborate with other departments in town, including land use, and I would also say public works, because we see some of these, quite a few of these in public rights of way. So I would say public works is also a, a key piece of the puzzle here.
Right, thank you. And I, I just one last comment. I, I didn't remember the cumulative. I don't remember seeing that in some of the docket decisions that Ben had sent through, but there was a statement on one of them that ConDOT, State DOT, prohibits the installation on their property, which I thought was interesting, and what the justification was for.
which I thought was interesting, and what the justification was for their ability to prohibit installations on, it was specific to a railroad placement.
Right. So actually, there's been new legislation, which was signed by the governor last year, and I'm just going to take a quick look at it, but I believe it was in July of last year, July, August of last year, which actually sets up a council, a 5G council, at the state level. And the state is actually looking to allow these types of installations on DOT property as well as deep property. So that has changed since this new legislation, Public Act, was signed. So it looks like there's a real initiative, at least on the part of the state, to get the 5G deployment going. And actually, the Public Act is called an Act Accelerating the Deployment of 5G Wireless Facilities. So that tells you something, right? And so when you look at it, DOT and deep properties can be available for these installations. And the state is actually in the process of setting up the procedures, from what I can tell. And there's a panel at the state level that's looking into this.
Right. Thank you for pointing that out. That's...
And it's very new development.
Yeah, the property owner, I'm sure, disappointed to find out that happened after placement for us from this house, but...
Okay, thank you. Amina, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, and the last item, an old business, will be a real quick one. The parking of recreational, commercial vehicles on residential streets. We heard last, the last meeting, that's clearly an enforcement issue. So we are just monitoring right now. There's no need for us to do anything here. I did receive a note from probably somebody in my neighborhood. It was not signed, referencing a vehicle that's in our neighborhood. But in the last week, it's only been out on the road one day, and it wasn't for very long. The spot it was in is, again, not very good. It's a sightline issue. So we're just going to monitor that, and if we have to, if the police have to go over there or anyplace else, they will. But right now, there's not much to report on that. Unless there's any questions on that, we will move forward to new business. And first, I'm going to...
I don't know if I can do this now procedurally, but I was supposed to make an amendment to the agenda when we started the meeting, that we want the public education campaign to go before the MI improvement for Greenwich Avenue and Elm Street, because there's some training that the team has to attend.
Yeah, so we would just be putting Item F, switching, one second, Chief. We would just be pushing, switching Item F with Item E, so it's just one spot. So is there a motion to move up the public education campaign with signs and Sergeant Thorpe to go right after the amendment to the traffic ordinance to Millbank Avenue?
I motion that we move the public education campaign with signs, Item F, to go immediately after Item D, which is the amendment to traffic ordinance on Millbank Avenue.
Okay.
Jill Overlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's yes.
Jill Overlander, yes. Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll just switch those around. Okay, first up on the docket is the appointment of an Assistant Fire Chief. And I know we have Chief McHugh on the line. We just heard him. Let's see if we can get him on. Chief, can you unmute?
Hey, good morning, everybody. How are you?
Good morning, Chief.
Good, good morning. Yeah, so the first order of new business would be the appointment of the new Assistant Chief for the Greenwich Fire Department. It was a long process, not a long process, it was a hard process to pick my new Assistant Chief. I wanted to stay internally within the department with our two candidates. They both brought a lot to the table, both highly qualified candidates. And, you know, I ended up choosing, like, to nominate or bring to Brian Kozak as our possible future Assistant Chief of the Greenwich Fire Department. Brian brings a lot of experience, 24 years plus in the Greenwich Fire Department, is currently a, is currently a Assistant Chief, or sorry, Deputy Chief on the floor. So he would bring a lot of great qualities and very good technology to the Greenwich Fire Department.
Thank you, Chief. I know it was a hard, you know, hard choice, and it's always a tough process, but I think you, keeping it within the department, I think, was a very good thing, and it certainly will help you, Brian would help you get off and running, bringing a lot of institutional knowledge to the job and certainly as an Assistant Chief. But I'm very familiar with Brian and the process here, but I'll turn it over to Lauren and Jill if they have any questions of you.
I'll start. I don't have questions, but I did have the opportunity to talk to Brian. So thanks for reaching out. And one of the positive aspects that we discussed was that he's also a volunteer fireman in his town that he lives in. And I appreciated that level of experience and the creation of collaboration and trust between our career firefighters and volunteer firefighters in Greenwich as we move forward.
Thank you, Lauren. That's a very important point to be made, something that we've all committed to really address going forward. And I know Chief McHugh has been all on board with that. So thank you. Thanks for mentioning it. Jill, did you want to say anything?
Yes, thank you. I also had the opportunity to speak with Deputy Chief Kozak, and I wanted to thank him for his 24 years in the Greenwich Fire Department. And I assured him in our conversation that I'm a strong supporter of the department and the work that they do, and the commitment of the men and women who work in the department. I will be abstaining from this vote, as I've noted in prior appointments, that not being part of the interview process itself, there's really not a foundation for making a determination on whether or not this is the right appointment as the Assistant Chief. But assuming it goes forward, I will give my full on support to the entire department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of Brian Kozak to Assistant Fire Chief?
Lauren Raven, I motion to approve the recommendation to appoint Brian Kozak as the Assistant Fire Chief for the town of Greenwich.
Thank you. Fred Camillo will second that. All those in favor, Fred Camillo is yes.
I'm abstaining. Jill Overlander abstaining.
Lauren Raven is yes.
Okay, thank you both. Okay, so by a vote of 2-0-1, congratulations, Brian Kozak, Assistant Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief, for bringing...
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
We're looking forward to the new administration, and I think you're off to a great start. Thank you.
And you're all invited, you're all invited Monday.
Oh, good. What time is that, Chief?
11 o'clock at the headquarters, socially distanced.
All right, thank you.
It's Brian Kozak, Fred.
Hey, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. We're happy for you.
Thank you, Chief, and I just wanted to thank the board for your support, and I look forward to moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. We're looking forward to working with you.
And Brian, on behalf of the Police Department, congratulations.
Thanks, Mark. So have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Next up is the closure of Veterans Way on Veterans Day in Byram. And we have our friend Mike Armstrong from the Byram Veterans Association.
This is Barbara. I just received an email from Michael that he is unable to attend and because of work commitments unexpectedly. And it's a pretty straightforward request that you have in front of you. If you have any questions, be happy to forward them to you, to him.
Yes, I'm sure I know, I think everybody's aware where this is. It's not a very big strip of land, of street. We've marched on it many times before. But this is just a closure from 3:00 to 8:00. And it's just a ceremony and rededication opening of the Byram Veterans Association. And there'll be a band playing from 4:00 to 6:00. Food and beverages will be available for purchase. Appropriate social distancing practices will be strictly enforced, including the wearing of masks, hand sanitizers around, and limiting one person at a time in the restrooms. All-town representatives are welcome. And again, this is on Veterans Day, Wednesday, November 11th, 3:00 to 8:00. And it should be a great time, but I don't know if Lauren or Jill have any questions on this?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion then to approve the road closure for five hours on November 11th for Veterans Day in Byram?
Lauren Raven, I motion to approve the closure of Veterans Way in Byram on Veterans Day, November 11th, from the hours of 3:00 to 8:00.
Jill Overlander, I second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor, Fred Camillo is yes.
Jill Overlander votes yes. Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, great. Hopefully, we'll see everybody there, at least for a little while on Veterans Day. I know there's something in Cosco right after that, too. And something before that in Greenwich, so. Even though it'll be a little bit different, we will certainly pay no less of a tribute to our veterans that day. Okay, next up is the Board of Selectmen's Energy Management Advisory Committee. This originally was slated to be a commission. There was considerable pushback in the RTM on this. We were going back and forth last year, last winter. And even though there was, I think, real good movement on this and lots of agreement, it still wasn't there. And we think this is important enough not to keep putting this off. So we decided to make it Board of Selectmen Committee. We could have made it a First Selectmen's Committee, but I felt more comfortable having the board fully engaged on this. One of the select persons is running the Sustainability Committee. I just think it's a good fit for the whole board to be in on this. But it's, again, something that I think it's long overdue for the town. And for those who may have some concern that a committee may not be as strong or as productive as a commission, I would tell you to look at the First Selectmen's Committee for people with disabilities. Look at the good works they do. They are front and center. They're passionate. They meet consistently, and they get things done. And I expect no less from this committee. And just bringing it up now as a first read, and I guess we could vote on it in two weeks. And then, by the following meeting, I would love to have the committee and panels, so they can get off and running, and it's, you know, the end of this year, and then they'll have a whole, you know, starting the new year acquainted with each other. So you have the draft in front of you. I don't know if you have any questions on that. But certainly, this is a first read, so I'll yield the floor to Lauren and Jill if they have any questions or concerns or comments.
I'll just make a couple of comments, Fred. Thank you. Yes, thank you. I think this is a great idea. I am in favor of the commission as well, but given the timetable to adopt language on that through the RTM, then start the interview process, then get it in panels, we would have lost another year, and this is just far too important to delay. So thank you for agreeing to create a committee and putting it forward. And I'd love to be able to find some money as well to support an energy consultant that can support the work of this committee. I did put in a request to the BET to see if they have extra consulting funds this year, so perhaps we can pursue that. And I'll put in a plug for, as we start to address the budget issues for next year, trying to see what we might be able to support as well. So I think this is an area that Greenwich needs to advance on. Other communities are a little further ahead than we are, and we want to catch up. So I look forward to the discussions on this.
Thank you. Lauren?
Yeah, I too agree that this is a great idea, and one of the things that I'll be looking out for. I'm all about making connections, collaboration, and doing things efficiently. We have a Sustainability Committee. We have a Conservation Commission. Now we're having an Energy Committee. And just to make sure we're not working on things independently, that we're working on things collaboratively. And that'll be something that I'll watch for.
Great, great point. And we certainly don't want people, you know, maybe overlapping and doing the same thing when they actually could be working, you know, together and coordinating on any issue. So very good point, and we want to tie it all together. So that will be certainly one of the things that this committee can work on. So thank you, and we'll vote on that in two weeks. Right now, we'll go to Item D, which is to amend the traffic ordinance on Millbank Avenue with Deputy Chief Mark Marino. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Mr. First Selectmen. How are you? And good morning to everyone else on.
Doing well, thank you.
Good. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to present this morning on what I feel is a very important safety enhancement that we will be presenting for the crosswalk on Millbank Avenue, the mid-block crosswalk in the vicinity of Agnes Morley and the Housing Authority property. This is really a collaboration between the Police Department, the Department of Public Works, their engineering department, and also, you know, I'm here representing Parking Services also. But it's a collaboration of the Traffic Safety Coordination Committee, chaired by Jim Michael. And really, the bulk of this work was really done by his department and his office and the engineers there, who I see are, you know, on the call this morning as well. So what we're proposing is that a rectangular rapid flash beacon be installed on both sides of that mid-block crosswalk leading up to it to enhance the visibility and to warn vehicles and drivers of the potential of a pedestrian crossing the street in that area. It's also going to, this project will also provide enhanced lighting in that vicinity, you know, and also really enhance the line of sight for vehicles traveling in both directions by eliminating a small percentage of the parking spaces that are on the western side of Millbank Avenue. So what the plan calls for to provide those enhanced line of sight issues is a reduction of four parking spaces along that side of the road. However, I just want to point out that there will still be 10 parking spaces available in that vicinity, so we're not eliminating all of the parking in that area, just a small part of it. As part of this, in preparation of this project, we did send out a letter to the residents that reside in that area. I believe you, as part of the packet, you have a copy of that. It explained the program and the plan and what we were looking to do. And, you know, I have not, as of this point, received any concerns or feedback from any of the residents in response to that letter. I checked with DPW just a day ago, and they also, as of this point, have not received any feedback or negative input from any of the area residents. So that is our proposal. And happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Well, that, thank you, Chief. Yeah, this has been a problem area for a while. And many of us knew Sonny Ono, who was unfortunately tragically killed there a couple of years ago.
Exactly.
Yeah, we, we've heard from residents there since then about the sightline and cars blocking their views as they're exiting their condos, not even where Agnes Morley is right next door. And so it's really, it's, it's, I think, a win-win for pedestrians and for residents who live both in Agnes Morley and in other houses and condominiums there. It's a sightline problem. So I think we all hate to lose spaces, in this case four, but as you said, there's still 10 remaining there. And this, this certainly will increase and enhance public safety. So, and I've heard from a couple of residents already, and they're, they're very, very happy about this. So thank you for all your work, and certainly to DPW for all the work they did on this.
Thank you, sir.
Jill, you have a hand up?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Chief, for providing the materials. Just a question, a couple of questions for you. The plan indicates that there are in-street pedestrian crossing signs. One is south of, looks like south of the crosswalk, one is north. Will they be staying, or are they going to be removed with the addition of the the blinking light?
Well, so the rectangular rapid flash beacon will have signs with it. You know, if, if I may, I'll defer that question to
I'll grab it.
Jason Kaufman or Jim Michael, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the signs that the street, in-street signs will be removed once the work is completed. Those we do see a decent amount of damage to because of the width of the roadways and so forth. Vehicles do hit them. Once we have the flashing sign, we will remove the in-street sign.
And how does the flashing sign, can you just describe what it looks like? Is it a structural installation? Is it hung? Is it in the middle? How does that work? And it needs to, I guess, be activated then by the pedestrian, is that?
So, so the signs are, basically, it's a pedestrian crossing sign with two yellow beacons underneath it. That if you think, if you've been in front of Town Hall, which I'm sure you have, you've seen the crosswalk sign, right? Probably you're looking at it right now.
Looking at it right now.
It's probably right outside your window there. And it will look pretty much exactly like that, with the exception of that is a more decorative pole. It will be more of a standard pole. We've recently installed a couple of these on Riverside over in front of St. Catherine's. If you've been over there, there's some up and down Sound Beach Avenue at various crosswalks in that stretch. And we've, we tend to install these at, there's one over in Byram at Henry Street. I'm trying to think of other places off the top of my head that they are, but those are some of the
In front of rail, in front of the railroad station, right? Although that's also elevated with a bump. That's the same kind of crossing?
It's, it's a very similar crossing. I'm, I'm not sure if we've put one there yet or not, but I do know that some of the other places that I mentioned there, they are there. And we are installing them periodically at various different higher-traffic locations associated with pedestrians.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, Jim, and thanks, Chief. Okay, is there a motion to accept this amendment to the traffic ordinance for Millbank Avenue?
Lauren Raven, I motion to accept the recommendation to amend the traffic ordinance Schedule I on Millbank Avenue.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes. Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, thank you. Passes three, zero, and then we'll go to the Public Education Campaign with Signs. And we have Sergeant Thoram on, I believe.
Jeff, I'm going to give over my seat to Sergeant Thoram, so he'll be joining you in a second.
Thanks, Keith.
Morning, Sergeant.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Selectmen and the Board. This is just more of an informational packet to let you folks know where we're trying to go in the Police Department with the current issue of stolen motor vehicles and larceny from motor vehicles. So over the past year, the Greenwich Police Department has used social media, community meetings, editorials, radio shows, and then lastly, the informational flyer that was attached to all the town residents with their tax bill to basically lock their car. What does that have to do for us today? We have 105 stolen motor vehicles from the town of Greenwich, and 105 have been unlocked with the key fob in them. So we're 100%. We have larcenies from motor vehicles currently up in the town of Greenwich with 167, excuse me, with a 67% increase. Also has to do with unlocked motor vehicles. So as you're wearing your packet, we're going to try something different. As we see all the yard signs that are out there with Election Day, thank a police officer, first responders, et cetera, et cetera, we're looking to try and make more public awareness with everything in your packet, from lock it or lose it, to it's 8:00 PM, did you lock your car? Please don't be a victim, lock your car. It's as simple as no password, lock, use your key fob. So just trying to make it a little bit more catchy, and at the same time, bring attention to the subject. Right? Initial costs on these things, as you have in your packet, it's going to be done through the Police Department's budget. Right? We're, we're working with vendors to try and get a price as low as we can. We're looking to have two or three different scenarios on the sign, phrases on the sign. Because we all know, when you see a sign for so many times in a row, it becomes just background. We don't really pay attention to it, and we will then try and make sure that we get that area. The initial program, pilot program, putting these signs out, we're going to take in consideration. The Election Day signs obviously have a couple of weeks to be removed from the municipality areas, right, after Election Day. So we're looking at a timeframe of early December, mid-December, right? Even at the end of November, depending on when our vendor gets back to us. Some of the signs will be located in, obviously, all of town property with, could be like Lake Governor Circle, for example, over in Old Greenwich, Sound Beach, as you're coming out of Sound Beach. So different areas of town are going to be targeted with it for purposes of reduction of crime. Other than that, there isn't too much more to this. We've spoken with the town attorney. That's how Imanah suggested that I at least brief you folks on what we're trying to do. Because the legality of it is, it's town or Greenwich property. The signs are going to be 18 by 24, nothing bigger, nothing smaller. We're going to start looking at other, other ways to educate the public, including the use, and James Michael will, will know this as well, the use of the electronic signs, not just because we're in a drought, et cetera, et cetera, but remember to lock your car. And we're going to try and move those along as we can. So that's what I have, and if I can certainly answer any questions, I will.
No, I, I appreciate it, Sergeant. This is very, being very proactive. It's kind of embarrassing that our numbers are so high. And as you said, we're 105 for 105. You know, thefts with fobs in the car.
Yes, that's, those are vehicles currently unlocked with key fobs in them. So if you're not familiar, we have, from a police standpoint, we, we're not the only ones in Greenwich getting hit. So please don't think it's Greenwich, and it's only a Greenwich problem. I live in Norwalk, there's different areas in town, Darien, Fairfield, Westport, New Canaan. Every night, we have young juvenile offenders coming into town, and they do as well. And they're going door to door, basically car door to car door, and finding unlocked motor vehicles. If there's property in it, they will take the property. If they step on the brake, push the button, car starts, the car goes.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a simple fix, but, and no one likes sign pollution, but this is very much needed. We know when this happened, this, at the end of the day, we all end up paying for this and increased rates and everything else, and the police having to divert resources for things like this, which are totally preventable.
I will tell you, from a police standpoint, of manpower being a supervisor in the Detective Division, every stolen car that we get recovered, which we have all recovered, all these cars, gets processed by one of my detectives to try and get, obviously, evidence, accountability, to see if we can make an arrest going forward.
Thank you. That's considerable time, so. I appreciate so much. Certainly, I know you're not looking for a vote here, but I, I will absolutely endorse it verbally. And I, I'm sure Jill and Lauren, well, no one wants to see this continue. And I know when it was, in my neighborhood, there was a rail issue about like seven, eight years ago. And then people started to lock their cars. And these, the crime, the instances of theft went way down. And then it creeped back up again because people started
So with that being said, right, so with that being said, I mean, obviously, neighbor awareness, community awareness, we've done this with community partnerships. We have monthly meetings with our Community Police Partnership Program, which are town residents that are welcome to go in. Anybody and anybody you talk to, you know, I try and tell everybody all the time, you work too hard for it, why let somebody else take it? So I know you had a question, go ahead.
Yes, thanks. I couldn't see in the material about how many signs you thought you were going to produce. I saw the cost of the signs, but I didn't see a total.
So we're going to look like maybe a pilot program. We're thinking roughly three different phrases, probably about 25 signs with each phrase on it, just so we can start to factor in and see. Plus, we want to obviously cover costs that say if someone's signs start to disappear as well.
Yeah, definitely. And then I had a thought that might not be as polluting as the signs. Have you thought of, just for community members to put car magnets? Not stickers, but magnets. So if we're driving around in town as residents, that we're reminding people to lock their cars.
So we have not thought about that at all. I mean, I, I did take in, I took notes when, at the beginning of the meeting, when you talked about the banner, because that's another area that we're trying to look at as well. The banner on Greenwich Avenue or a banner on Sound Beach Bridge, which is just as important, and how it multiplies in. So no magnets, we can certainly take a look at that and take a cost initiative at that as well. Because there's plenty of pro residents that would like to get the message out as well.
That's what I was thinking. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the update. One other suggestion might be to reach out to the high schools as part of a sort of safety education campaign for the kids that are driving that might not think about locking the cars. I don't know whether you've done that already, but just an idea that they don't, some kids aren't necessarily taught to lock their cars when they leave. So just an idea, another way to get the word out.
Certainly, because we could certainly add that to the SRO program that's over there. We do speak to the new drivers on the driver's end. We have videos that go out for the new drivers and how to interact with the police, for instance, and so forth. So that, that certainly could be added.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, Sergeant.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Hopefully, we can, this will pay dividends, and we'll see those numbers decrease in coming weeks and months. All right. Lastly, we have the request for MI referral for the intersection of Greenwich Avenue and Elm Street. And Jason Kaufman's here with us from DPW. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, Mr. First Selectmen and the Board. Thank you for having me here today to present our project. I'm happy to be here, and I'm happy to be a part of this project. First make sure that I can share my screen here. I'm not able to. Can the host make me a panelist or a co-host, please?
Barbara?
Working on it.
I also see a hand up in the, in the attendee list.
Okay, Jason, you should be on set.
Okay, are we seeing the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
All right, great. Again, I'm Jason Kaufman, I'm with Department of Public Works Engineering Division. And I'm pleased to be here today to present the first step in our MI approval process for intersection improvements to Greenwich Avenue and Elm Street. Just a bit about our team here, working on this project with Jim Michael, Deputy Commissioner, and Eleanor Rogers, Senior Civil Engineer, too, with the engineering. Well, today I'm going to cover our project objectives, the existing conditions, our proposed plan, some of the elements of the improvements, and what we anticipate the cost to be, and what our hopeful schedule is. The first thing I want to just note here today is that we are making great timing for this project and for this proposal, being that this is the United States' first-ever National Pedestrian Safety Month. And our project here is aimed, our, our top goal is to improve pedestrian safety, along with other items such as building a sense of place, increasing landscaping, green space, incorporating some of the recommendations from a kinetic DOT monthly audit in 2018, improve accessibility for persons with disabilities, but general accessibility as well. You know, people with strollers, carriages, high heels, et cetera. And also, we're hoping to have this project be a proof of concept for other improvements on Greenwich Avenue and other intersection locations. Just a quick bit about the existing traffic volumes. We took these counts in 2018 while the police officer was still conducting the traffic at the intersection. And here you can see what the traffic volumes were in the PM and AM peak hour, along with the Saturday midday. One thing I just want to note here is the high volume of pedestrians. 300 during the PM peak hour and 800 during a one-hour period on Saturday. So we're looking at high volumes of pedestrians. And then just on the bottom right, it's just a little graphic to show relative to other roads in Greenwich, what we see on Greenwich Avenue. About 3,500 vehicles a day, where you see Sound Beach, Putnam Avenue, 80,000, 20,000. Just gives a little frame of reference. A few more items about the existing conditions. There's various trees along the avenue in this location. There is a decorative clock, AD accessible parking, decorative lighting, and then amenities such as newspaper stands, recycling bins, benches, and trash. These are some of those elements I just mentioned. I'm sure everyone is familiar with the intersection, but just some graphics, the lighting, the trash receptacles, the newspaper bins, one of the nice trees at the southwest corner, and the nice decorative clock in front of Better Ridge. And then on the left side, on the bottom, you see our town standard bench, which we're proposing to add a few more at this location. This is just a survey showing the existing plan, where you can see the roadways, the parking, curb lines, trees, and the striping in this area. I'm going to do a quick back and forth here, just to show you the okay, just to show you the, the impact we're seeing between existing and proposed. So a pretty decent impact. And the proposed plan includes what we call bump outs, which extends the curb line to the edge of the existing parking areas. Both the parallel parking areas on East and West Down Street and the angled parking on Greenwich Avenue. You can see by the green, we're proposing to increase impervious surfaces quite significantly. There's a couple of spots here that are tree areas, but there's not much green space, there's some dirt patches. We're looking to expand those green areas and increase landscaping. I'm going to go through the more, the specifics as we go through, but this is kind of just the general plan I'm showing here right now. This line just shows an aerial of This slide just shows an aerial of the existing conditions and the proposed conditions. It gives a nice side by side to show, you know, aerially, how much green space we're looking to introduce and the decorative crosswalks. And where the curb lines will be. But first, I want to talk a little bit about the bulb outs. The purpose of bulb outs are to increase the visual connection between pedestrian and drivers. And also, they reduce the crossing distance and crossing time for pedestrians. I'm not going to go through this this chart in detail, but I will point out that. We're looking at a 41% reduction in the crossing distance and time across Greenwich Avenue. And a minor decrease as well for East and West Elm Street. And this is based on a IT recommendation of three and a half feet per second. Part of this project also includes what's called a raised intersection. Essentially, that is where the intersection is raised up to the elevation of the adjacent sidewalks. Essentially, the whole intersection becomes a large speed home. And the good things about that is that it helps to alert drivers that you're entering a heavily trafficked pedestrian zone. It reduces vehicle speeds entering the intersection and it improves visibility between pedestrians and drivers in the intersection. One thing also to note is that this intersection currently operates with a four-way stop. And this will remain the same moving forward. It will continue to be a four-way stop, a three-way stop, I'm sorry. As southbound as one way. A little bit about the green space. We currently have, within the limits of the project, about 340 square feet of green space. And we're looking to increase that by 1,860 square feet. So that's like a 550% increase in green space. We're in coordination with the Department of Parks and Recreation to assist us with the landscaping plan, which they have done in various other locations. Within the downtown in recent years. Another element of this project is we're going to be installing two permanent bike racks. At the northern corners on Elm Street. And I'll go back when we have questions with the main plan to look at all these elements of where they're going. We're looking to utilize a designated pad to avoid interference with drivers and pedestrians. And there will be space for four bikes. Okay, parking. I know everyone is interested in that always. So I'm going to go top left and work my way clockwise. So Elm Street, we're looking to swap the existing loading zone that currently exists right here. With the spaces on the other side. So we're having no net loss in parking, but we're looking to move the loading zone down to the end. The reason for this is by bumping out the curb to reduce the crossing distance and increase green space. It will make it difficult for delivery vehicles to get into what's currently the loading zone. So we're looking to relocate it down here. There's a driveway for this property here. Delivery vehicles will be able to pull in forward and back into the space and then leave when need be. Between Elm Street and the next intersection to the north, which is Lewis, we're looking at no net loss in parking spaces. We are losing one to change the handicap parking space here, but we're looking to add it back on this side where there currently is no parking. On the south side, there will be a four parking space loss on Greenwich Avenue. The main reason for this is when we look at ADA parking spaces on Greenwich Avenue, the handicap stalls. Almost all of them appear on the east side of the road. So we're looking to take the opportunity to move one of the spaces to the west side of the road. By doing that, you need an aisle and a space, so you're taking up one there. And then also, what we found is that it's not ideal to have vehicles backing up directly into a crosswalk. Which you see quite frequently on the avenue right now. So by doing this, you end up losing another two spaces. Here, we are losing four, but there are 94 spaces between Elm Street and the next intersection at Arch. So it's really only a 4%. Some other elements, there are four light decorative light poles at this intersection that are owned by Eversource. We are looking to relocate those poles to be closer to the new tighter intersection, which will in turn improve the visibility for pedestrians and drivers. We have to make some drainage modifications based on the raised intersection. And also some of the condition assessments that we've been conducting recently. And so there will be an element of drainage here to add a couple of catch basins and a manhole. A bit about the cost and schedule. First and foremost, we will be maintaining access to all buildings and businesses that are within the work area. As long as our approval process goes, as we hope, we're looking to start this work in the early spring next year. Each corner will be worked on individually, not all four corners at once. So we're anticipating about two to three weeks per in per corner. So that will equate to eight to 12 weeks. And we have a preliminary cost estimate of approximately $300,000. I am going to just go back quickly to the overall plan. Just to point out the locations of some of these features that I was talking about. So I'll start on the southwest corner. One element of this project is the handicap spaces will now have direct access to the sidewalk without having to travel into the street. And it will be ADA compliant. We are also proposing a pocket within the landscape dial-in for a bench, open space for a wheelchair, and a relocated trash receptacle. On the northwest corner, this is the location where the bike rack will go, a relocated trash receptacle. And these are the four relocated light locations closer to the intersection. At the northeast corner, the same thing with this ADA stall, a dedicated ramp up to the sidewalk. Relocated trash receptacle and bike rack. And then finally, on the southeast corner, relocated newspaper stand, trash receptacle, another bench, and space for a wheelchair. All the sidewalks within the limits will be replaced. Paving, the area will be paved and the center of the intersection will be retrofitted with. A decorative crosswalk material, the same product that we have used in Town Beach Avenue. And in front of the senior center on Greenwich Avenue further down. I just want to also note that a feature of the raised intersection is that pedestrians who are walking. Approaching the intersection at the elevation of the sidewalk will now travel at a consistent elevation across the intersection. There will be no more ramping down and ramping back up. So that is a added safety benefit and accessibility benefit for just the general population and specifically for persons with disabilities. I think I hit on everything. Jim, anything I missed?
No, I think that's good. I think we can open it up to questions now.
Jason, thanks so much for that detailed presentation. I love it. I think everybody's going to love it in town. Real quickly, one of the first slides you had, it showed that the. Pedestrian count after 4:30 and again on Saturday and Sunday as being the most. Having the highest volume, yeah, right there. Thank you. And that's at times when there's never been officers. That's after four o'clock and it's on the weekend, correct?
That's correct, yes. So the AM peak would have been the only time that the officer was there for these counts.
Interesting. Yeah, that's what we've been told and what we've seen in other other studies before. And this is only going to increase, enhance public safety as well as provide really a nice intersection there and a different look. More aesthetically pleasing look to the to the avenue. So I think it's a it's a win-win all around, but. Let's see if anybody else has any any question. Oh, and you said that we'd start this in March, you said, you think?
Yeah, we're looking to start early spring and be finished before Memorial Day.
That'd be great. Okay, thank you.
So Fred, we also have Alan Gunsberg has his hand up, but I just wanted to mention that. Jim and Jason had shown the Reimagine Committee these plans. We did not take a vote in the committee. But we had expressed a favorable opinion with respect to the pedestrian safety, the ADA. Accessibility and enhancements as well as the green space.
Thank you.
So if we want to recognize Alan.
Fred, I just also have a couple of questions or comments.
Sure. And then let Jill go first and then you said Alan has his hand up, so it'll be the first question after that. Go ahead, Jill.
So yes, so thank you, Jason, for this presentation and Jim as well. We spent some time talking about these issues on Monday. I appreciate all of your time. My question, just for the the people in the audience, really revolved around timing and. And. How it fits into the rest of the Greenwich Avenue plan. There's the Greenwich Avenue Streetscape proposals have been on the list for a number of years, most recently put off. Last year and especially as we're starting to debate the nodes and what's going to happen with the aesthetic and the look and the. Actually accessibility alongside along Greenwich Avenue. I wonder why we're considering it in a piecemeal fashion as opposed to the the overall. I'm 100% supportive of addressing the safety issues and the accessibility issues. I just think that we need to be thoughtful about the whole Greenwich Avenue and how it looks and how it all interacts together. And I know that you were, you had indicated that you were prepared to to start that process early in 2021. So it's really, this is really, I guess, a question to. Margarita to some degree, perhaps, the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm not, we're still learning the MI process. And why this should go forward now without the input of the community on on those other aspects.
So I think.
I can answer one of those right off the bat. The reason why we're doing one at a time is. We want to crawl before we can walk. We want to show people how this would look. And it take these things take time. So to do it at each intersection at the same time would probably bring everything to a grinding halt. So we want to make do it. I mean, I think everybody was, you know, in agreement on that, that we do it one at a time. And then, you know, it's not many intersections there, thank God, but we're, this will be the first one. And I would love to be able to finish this off in the next few years, but this is the first one and we just thought we'd do one at a time. And people will, when they see what this looks like, they're, I think they'll be very excited to have the other ones done.
Yes, and I think the one thing we would say in Public Works is this is kind of a. Just a little bit of an offshoot to the overall project. The overall project is still ongoing. It's the same. We have the same internal team in Public Works that's been working on this project for both the Greenwich Avenue and this. Jason and Eleanor are the two main engineers dealing with that project. This project is just kind of an offshoot to the same general project. It's the same concepts that we would be proposing as part of the overall project. And we've done the, a lot of the utility. Research and work and preparation for doing the main project. So we see this as an enhancement and kind of like Fred said, a proof of concept for the overall project, not really its own separate entity.
Which is, which is great. I appreciate that. So perhaps you can show us what the rest of the avenue will look like. And what what the intended plans are for the rest of the avenue, including, you know, we're going to have a public hearing. Next week on the dining and the parking, Fred, I guess, I don't actually, I don't think now. I don't know that it was announced in your your comments, but I think it's good to let the public know that that's going to happen next Tuesday. And perhaps we can incorporate all of that into the sort of the general schematic.
Yeah, it'll be in the the updates this week. Tomorrow morning or tomorrow afternoon. Any other questions?
Do we want to go to Alan?
You could go, Gunsberg.
Yes, hi, Alan.
Hi, Fred. Hi, Jill, hi. Hi, everybody. I really appreciate you recognizing me in the audience. We were, the First Selectmen's Advisory Committee was given a similar presentation. We believe that it builds better and more safe accessible parking for the for for people with disabilities. Even the accessible parking works better for pedestrians who are disabled, who have, won't see cars pulling back into them. We think that the the cross times are going to be better. We really thought that the the open spot for a wheelchair next to the bench was heartwarming. And and extremely nice to hear. I think this is going to be a a real good addition. You know, I had incredible concerns when the budget was going last time about the police and them coming off the avenue. This goes a long way in in creating a safer crossing experience. A safer driving experience for everybody. So I want to thank my partners at the Department of Public Works. I also want to also give a big thumbs up to the signage that you talked about with. With Deputy Chief Marino before. We really appreciate the the help and and the inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Much appreciated. Was there any other hands raised? Okay, I don't see any other ones.
Fred Phillip Dodson has his hand raised and the attendees.
Oh, sorry, Phil. Can you, can you unmute Phil? Hi, Phil. Good morning. Phil, you there?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Phil. Good morning.
Okay, I'm Phil Dodson. I'm a RTM member in District Eight. I'm also Secretary on the Public Works Committee and we. Examine this item at a special meeting about a week ago. One of our concerns was the reduced space and turning radius at these intersections for. Emergency vehicle response, especially the large ladder truck from Central Fire Station. Also, delivery trucks, especially semi tractor trailers. That needs to be addressed. And as far as the raised intersection. During the presentation, Jason mentioned that. You wanted traffic to slow down or be aware that they were coming into the intersection. Well, this is a three-way stop. So people, speeding is not an issue here. Vehicles have to stop before they proceed through the the intersection. The raised level is going to impede the traffic flow during the day when you have bumper to bumper traffic. A lot of time for traffic to pass. So you're going to have increased traffic waits for the side streets, people coming down. Also, the cost we mentioned, $200,000 was budgeted for this in the current budget. And now I see that the cost is going to be $300,000. And this is the first of, I believe, what, three intersections? It's also going to be Lewis Street and Havelmeyer Place. It's also gonna be Lewis Street and Havelmeyer Place. Is that correct?
It's, it's part of, uh, Phil, yes, it's Fred. It's part of the, the plan, the big first of, of uh all of the intersections to be done. And to your, your, so when we first walked this, Phil, we did this with the police, the fire, all of the relevant and pertinent department heads. Those are the first things we went over with the fire department. Can they, emergency vehicles, can they turn? Can they get to things? What if there's a fire? All these things were going over right off the bat. It's not like we just threw this out there without thinking about it. So everybody was in, all the departments, Jim was there. We had the fire marshals were there. We walked up and down the avenue. They rate, first questions were, could the vehicles, could they turn? Would this slow this down? Would it impede process, uh, progress? Would it, could we, what if there was a fire? And we were, when we were putting the nodes up, we had to go through all of that, all of those scenarios, and they were all addressed early on. So just so you know, um, I appreciate the questions, but they were asked on day one.
Well, it's not a question, it's a fact that when you have heavy traffic, especially like during the lunch hour, the, uh, the normal travel lanes are not open. And you have traffic stopped in all directions, fire engines have to come in on the um opposing lanes of travel. So the, the turning radius is going to be uh an issue.
Phil, well, Phil, the five, the professionals are firefighters, are policemen. They were there, they walked this. This is what they do for a living, Phil. And they came to the conclusion, they disagreed with your, uh, your conclusion there. And just so, you know, this is done in a lot of, a lot of municipalities throughout the country. Um, and there, it's looked at in the same way, it's gone over in the same way. And public safety act, emergency vehicle access is the first thing everybody looks at. That was already taken into consideration.
Well, also, as far as the parking space loss, you have four spaces here. If you have four spaces at the other intersections, you're talking the loss of twelve parking spaces. And parking has already become an issue because of the outdoor dining, which I understand the plan is that even after the COVID crisis passes, you're still going to continue the outdoor dining during the warm weather. And closing the, the bottom half of the avenue, which is considerable number of uh parking spaces that have been lost.
Yes, we, we do plan to do that, Phil. It's been one of the um success stories. People have been talking about it. It's Greenwich Avenue. In my lifetime, having grown up, I've never seen it as vibrant. And that's one of the things, one of the silver linings in this pandemic is we had always talked about making Greenwich Avenue more pedestrian-friendly. And certainly, we, it was on our radar last year, but we didn't think it would be this quickly. But if we had not gone outdoors, allowed them uh to, outdoor dining capabilities, then they would have went out of business, just like what happened, Phil, in, in Westport and other towns, where they did not go outdoors. But everybody has come to love it. And I walk there from the avenue all the time and it's, it's a different vibe, a different feel to Greenwich and Greenwich Avenue and Central Greenwich. And so it's something that we think should be a part of Greenwich going forward. And it's, it's been very, very popular. I'm sorry that you don't feel the same way, but I've learned a lo, a long time ago, you're not, you're never gonna get a hundred percent buy-in, but you always keep trying. So I appreciate.
Not me. I understand from business owners, some of the business owners are upset over the loss of parking spaces.
And can I add something? Can I add something?
Part of the avenue.
Can I add something to that? We are gonna have the public forum and um as part of the Reimagine Committee, we've talked about the parking and maybe there's alternate um transportation. And my understanding is that a lot of the spaces that are being taken up on Greenwich Avenue are actually from um employees. So I think, I think I recognize the issue, um, Phil. And certainly, I think everyone understands that we don't want to sacrifice the ability for people to hop into C V S or go, you know, to Diane's Books or any of the other merchants. But I think we have to look at it holistically and understand where um the issues are evolving from um as well. So that, that, that would be the only thing that I need to add is there seems to be an opportunity to move employee parking elsewhere. And that might alleviate some of the issues um without having to think about what we do with crosswalks and bump outs.
And, and to follow up on that, Lauren, Lauren's correct. And we're also, again, looking at, uh, we've, we've had some merchants reach out to us and uh request fifteen-minute parking spaces. We've approved four or six of them already um when, and uh at the top of the avenue and then off the bottom of the avenue. And we've heard from the merchants that are, that some of them are very, very happy with that. Um, we're also trying to uh look into raising money for a trolley to allow people to park at Town Hall so they can uh, you know, if they don't want to walk, which is, it's not a fire walk, but if they don't want to walk, we want to uh like they do in Harbor Point and Stanford, every thirty minutes for not, for free, someone can take a shuttle over uh to the business district. So we're working on lots of things, but as Lauren said, this has been a problem for decades where employees would feed the meters and then thus the, the, the.
Hey, friends.
While we're waiting for Fred to come back, if I may, just to touch on the adjacent property owners a little bit. I, I personally went into each one of these adjacent property owners, spoke with everybody, described the project, uh showed them different elements of what we're proposing to do. And then subsequent to that, we had a meeting on uh October sixth, uh a Zoom meeting with representatives from all the businesses and all the property owners. We received pretty favorable uh feedback. I'd urge anyone that is, you know, concerned as an adjacent owner to please contact us. We'd love to talk to you.
Fred's frozen again.
I, I guess while we're waiting, a question for Jim and Jason. If this, uh, can you just talk about the process? If it gets the MI, you're here for the MI, then what, what happens next?
So, so correct. So we're asking you for the approval of the municipal improvement. The next step after that is we go through planning and zoning for municipal improvement status. If that is approved at that stage, there is conditions on the funding for the project that we have to go back to the um B E T to get those conditions released. Um, and we'll present to them at that time. Assuming that we, you know, all of those things come back in a positive manner, we will move the project to the construction in the spring. So um, we do, that's our hope. That's kind of the process here. And we're trying to make sure that we do get this lined up so that we can move it straight into instruction as soon as the weather allows us to do. So that we're not making as much of an impact on pedestrians that may be walking the avenue over the summer timeframe when we do see the higher volumes of pedestrians.
Is this a first read for us? Have we been, I think we've been doing that typically?
Yes, this is your first read. The next meeting on November the um
Twelve.
Would be the opportunity for you to do the second read and to take a vote. Fred, you need to unmute.
Sorry, I'm talking myself there. But what was the, the date in the next meeting you said?
The next meeting would be November the twelfth.
Okay, so we're skipping a week then. Yes, it'd be three weeks.
Correct. It's always the second and the fourth Thursdays, so the, the second Thursday in November is the twelfth.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I have no other questions, but uh a great thorough presentation. So thank you, Jason and Jim.
Thank you.
Alrighty, and I don't see any other questions. So thanks, everybody. Um, I guess now we're going into uh executive session.
Actually, we're gonna.
Do not have any items for executive session. So um the next thing would be for a motion to adjourn. And then take a break and then go into our special meeting.
Yes, thank you. Is there a, so thanks again, everybody, for joining us and uh see you all around. Stay safe. And is there a motion to adjourn this Board of Selectment meeting for October twenty-second?
Uh, Lauren Raven, I motion that we adjourn our um October twenty-second meeting.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thanks. See you, everybody.